Good evening and welcome to the Slack Select Boards meeting for March 21st, 2024. And we start with the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America. United States of America, under God, in the name of His justice, law, and order.
Okay, Slack was supposed to be stories and many appointments. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six people who applied. Thank you very much. So I'll open it up with, uh, Patrick, what do you think?
Um, this will take a few minutes. You want me to, I'll go, I'd be happy to go. Um, I, uh, I had a chance to talk to everyone, uh, with the exception of Tom today, but I know Tom pretty well. So I just wanted to run through each one. Um, uh, Louis Corman is a scientist, um, uh, works at NIH, which is National Institutes of Health, uh, has a whole lot of experience with, um, with the, uh, you know, uh, not only microbiology, but also, you know, health effects. We actually had a really interesting, um, conversation related, as did Rachel Rivas. They're actually have very similar backgrounds related to, um, some of the challenges of managing PCBs, but that's a separate conversation. Um, very, very, uh, strong scientific background and candidate. Um, Tom Feinen, uh, was a, an oncologist at Yale University and was at BMC the last five or six years. Also as oncologist, also really strong scientific background. Um, uh, his partner, uh, Bill is on Conservation Commission now. And, uh, and he has a house both on Rouse Lake Mountain Road and, uh, on Mackinac Shores. And also a very strong candidate. I know Tom personally and they're a really excellent guy. Um, Susan Price, uh, yeah, is recently moved here, wants to get more involved in town government. She lives just off of Church Street, um, uh, was, is very interested in serving. Uh, Dan Pincus is building that new house over by the causeway that Jay Reind is the construction manager on. Uh, he, uh, uh, he's both a, a really nice guy, uh, his wife Becky, got two kids, Emmett and Adam. Uh, I'll give you a tour of that if you ever want it, anyone, uh, I'm not speaking for Dan though, uh, but really, really excellent guy. And I, and one of the things I like about him is, you know, he's a, he's younger, he's in his thirties with, uh, three and a half year old and one and a half year old. And I think that bringing kind of the next generation into, um, into the process is really important. Um, uh, Lori Richmond, uh, I talked to her today. Fantastic stories about the founding of Camp Mackinac with her dad, uh, who turns out didn't like the water too much. He's horrible, like ground sports kind of guy, but, um, in terms of just somebody with an immense, you know, kind of a institutional memory of the lake. Uh, this is somebody who's literally, family literally founded one of the most important properties on the lake back in the 1920s. Um, and, uh, and finally there's, um, Rachel Rivas, who liked Louis Corman, uh, is a, uh, is a PhD. Uh, uh, her husband, uh, Steve Aberbusch is a, is a medical doctor. And together they've got tremendous insight into kind of a lot of the climate oriented challenges that, that, uh, that, uh, you know, in terms of what's coming with warming water, with cyanobacteria, with, uh, with, with the questions around nutrients. And, and, um, and what I, what I, what I also liked about, about both, both, uh, both her and, um, and, uh, the one, uh, and, uh, uh, and, and Louis Corman is, you know, they both kind of mentioned the importance of reducing, um, uh, phosphorus and other, you know, kind of nutrients from the lake. And I think that getting help with sort of, you know, just encouraging neighbors to, um, think about lake health as they consider what to do on their private property, which we can't regulate, is a, is a really important consideration to make. So obviously we have, um, fewer slots than we have people unless that brings me to what I would suggest we do. Um, I talked to Gary and Gary is, um, is willing to attend without actually being on the board, which is great. That would open up a slot, you know, for us and, you know, and, and kind of the way I would look at it is statute, both the select board and the harbor master have statutory responsibilities and, and powers related. You know, the Slack Research Board Scholarship Commission is only advisory to the select board. So they're gonna get together, they make recommendations. Um, the harbor master, on the other hand, has specific duties that are, that are, that are laid out in Mass General Law. And the select board, of course, is the one that the board, the appointed board is reporting back to. So, you know, uh, I don't know if you recall Lisa, who's in the crowd today, the crowd, the crowd of two. Um, when she was gonna go on the Conservation Commission, remember Gary and Lisa both applied? And, and I stepped back from the Conservation Commission to create a slot. And I, and I personally wonder if, if, uh, you know, uh, you know, both, both, uh, both Gary and, and if you want Jamie, could both attend the meetings as representatives of the harbor master and the select board? And if we freed up both those spots, we could actually appoint all six people to the committee, which is what I would recommend, you know, because we've got six. Then we have nine slots total, seven would be voting, two non-voting. We could basically accommodate everybody who wants to volunteer. And, and I think that we gotta encourage as many people to be involved in town government as possible. So that would be my recommendation.
So.
How do you feel?
So, um, I guess I'm feeling a little differently, but that's not uncommon. Um, um, I guess I feel a little put off that like, um, we just restarted the board and, um, you know, I don't like sort of things happening under the sort of behind the scenes and, and sort of without sort of considering the whole board and what, and that, it just doesn't feel right and, um.
What's doing behind the scenes?
And if Gary would like to, but I had no knowledge of this, if he wants to step aside, that is his choice. And he, um, can come when he can come. I think some of these people are very lovely and will be a great addition to the board, but it is an advisory board to the select board. And I think just we fill the three slots with three of these people. I think Tom would be a great addition. He has, um, and Lori and maybe Rachel and, because we could use another someone who's local. Um, and maybe the other three could be alternates so that if someone chooses to step away, we can put them in place.
So what you have in the bylaw right now is the bylaw is specific. You have seven voting members and two non-voting members.
Okay.
That, that's how the bylaws are.
So, seven voting members.
So we could have nine.
You could have nine altogether, two would be non-voting members.
But they participate in all consultations, everything else.
This like, they're full around this.
I, I would just like to comment on the, nothing's happening behind the scenes. I took the time to call all six applicants today, you know, because I try to reach out to every single person who applies to one of our boards to talk to them. There's nothing behind the scenes. We're not allowed to talk out of session about appointments, Jamie. And any, anybody, including you or Chuck or Michael or anyone can call applicants and talk to them. I'm just giving feedback on actually doing the work of due diligence before we appoint people. Nothing behind the scenes here. I don't know what that means.
So right now we have eleven. If Gary Kleerman steps down.
We have ten. He's not stepping down. He's, he's basically willing to go to the meetings. He doesn't care if it votes or not. He's the harbor master. He, you know, they're.
But if he's going to the meetings, he'll be one of the non-voters.
No, you can just go to the meeting as a, as a participant, you know, everybody, public meetings, anybody can go. So the only difference between voting and non-voting members and the general public is the voting members and non-voting members are part of the discussion. The voting members, obviously, they vote to recommend. The public is just there to, if the chair or so chooses, can allow the public to participate or not. Yeah, I understand how it works. I show up, I go to agriculture and forestry all the time. I'm not on it. They always let me talk. Of course, and if the harbor master shows up and has something to say, the commission is gonna listen to harbor master. You know, he doesn't care about whether he's actually on it. And I'm just trying to make room for as many people who want to volunteer as possible.
He's not included in the, the alternate.
Yeah.
So he's just off.
He, he would basically be, he would be showing up at all the meetings, but not actually on the commission.
That leaves three. Plus two alternates. Five. Correct.
Yeah, you'd have three voting members if Gary stepped aside and two non-voting members.
Okay, so, so we, just want to check, there might be one or later.
Oh.
Hi, Mr.? Hi, Mr.?
Yes, yeah. And, yeah. And we need people that can attend meetings either by Zoom or in person.
Mm-hmm.
I would.
Who was the last person to send in a letter?
Okay, Tom.
Cause some were early, some were very early, and then there was one very last. And also, it doesn't need to be a heavily weighted, like, it's just an advisory board.
I would, my opinion would be go with, uh, Tom, Lori and Danielle as the voters. And Rachel and Susan as the alternates.
I, 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 I think Susan wants to be involved generally in government. And is Susan, Susan out there today? No. Um, so I don't want to speak for her, but my sense is that, um, that we could find another slot, the next opening for Susan. Um, I think that Louis is a very, very strong candidate, uh, because of his NIH experience. And I would strongly recommend.
I get it, that's right.
Yeah.
You okay with that? I make a motion. Tom Flynn, Lori Richmond, Danielle.
Do you want to let the public, see if anybody wants to comment?
Any, any comment on the public? I'm sorry. None? No hands raised. So, Tom, Tom Flynn.
Hey, Chucky?
Yeah?
Oh, I, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, thank, uh, the board for taking this on. I think it's a really important commission and I appreciate you, you working on it. And hopefully we'll do some good work for the town and, and.
Oh, I'm gonna make sure you do that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, you got it.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. And, and, uh, we're, we're, we're working well.
Okay, good. Can I make a motion? Tom Flynn, Lori Richmond.
Fine, yeah.
What's that?
It's not Feinen, yeah. The name is Feinen.
Okay, and, uh, Danielle picks me on the voter. And Rachel. And Louis be the alternate.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Got a second?
Second.
Go as a favor.
Hi.
Hi, and thank you, everybody. Well, it's nice to see you. Everybody, get into it. Okay, pick action on minutes of February 15th and March 7th. And what should we set the minutes?
Second.
As a favor.
Aye.
Uh, budget, operational and capital.
Uh, like we said, we'd be leaving this on for every meeting now until we finish everything. Uh, set up a meeting for next Wednesday with the finance committee for a joint meeting to have highway, uh, police and, uh, DPW come in for, to go over their capital requests. That, that'll be at six o'clock next Wednesday and also to discuss OPEB. Uh, one of the things that I, well, one of the things requested by the finance committee at their first meeting was, we have 580,000 of total equipment in the highway department. And one of the things asked was what would a note cost if we were to take out a note for five years? Um, we contacted our bank, uh, they gave us a state house note at a 5.5% interest. Um, 580,000, we'd end up having to pay back 95,150 in interest for a total of 675,150. So the question is, is it more of an advantage to spread five payments out? Five years worth of payments to get the payments down, the annual payments would be, um, 120,000 plus interest. So somewhere in the neighborhood, first year is 135,950. So to get a lower amount, but then we're bringing on $95,000 in interest payments at 5.5. Or do we fund all four? Or do we fund half this year, half or just one, one and one? But we are bringing that up for the next meeting with the joint finance. So I don't think we have to go deep into it, but I just wanted to let you know that request was asked. That information is in the packets that I gave out today, um, with updated information on that. Um, so that was one of the main requests that came in. Let me just go to my notes section and, uh, notes. Um, and in your packets, I added, uh, I added the note, I added the, uh, OPEB, uh, tab to the capital one. In the, uh, general budget, um, one of the things that we've seen is, uh, there was a request, some of the changes that have happened is, uh, increased pay for the electrical inspector, um, has been proposed. Uh, but this also, he's asked that we consider an increase to the permit fees, especially because we're doing a lot of solar ones. If we were to increase the inspection fees by $15, it would bring in 7,000 more, while the increase in pay is about 3,000. It would actually be a change that way. I did speak to Matt and, um, he's gonna look at, and I'm gonna work with him over the next couple of weeks to look at where our fees are in comparison with the other towns. The last time we did a conference at building department, electrical, the rest was in 2015.
Yeah, I think we should look at all the fees as a supplement.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm beginning that right now, uh, more to that. And that would obviously adjust the revenue. It wouldn't change the budget tabs as far as how much, but it would change the revenue tab. Um.
More revenue means you have to raise appropriately at least, so.
Right, right. When we go to set the tax rate, lower the tax rate, yes. So it would change the bu- budget amounts that are going forward. Um, you know, one of the things that we may want to consider is, uh, whether or not to eliminate the lifeguards in the park and recreation. Um, whether I need to increase the park and recreation by $75, uh, the water that we get from Mackinac Water.
I thought we decided to get rid of the lifeguard.
Yeah, but I updated the sheet to.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it's in there now.
Yes.
Okay.
It's out of.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, where are you, we're starting out revenue, where are we now? Now that it's a little bit later in the year, where are the revenues with, uh, with, uh, local options? The meals tax and the, uh, and the, and the occupancy tax, how are they coming in this year compared to prior years?
I can have that for you at the next meeting. So, yeah.
I mean, it just, you know, it's a big, you know, it's a.
Yeah.
Big chunk.
Um, well, last year we took in 2,615,000. We had budgeted 2,305. This year we're, the estimate is projected at 2,356. Um, so we still have some, some, leaving some room. You know, we're, we're still staying, um, you know, you don't want a budget rate two. You want to give yourself a little cushion so our balance sheets in the pot.
Is there a chapter 90, that supplement we got this year? Is that, well, is that a one-time thing or is that a new rule, this designation?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on, and what you're referring to is the fair share. So I think that we're gonna see that. I would anticipate that we're gonna see that annually.
But is that just, is that just increase what we have to pay roads? You don't put that in the budget?
No, that goes under our chapter nine.
I know, I know. I'm just saying that it's, it's neutral in terms of the impact of the budget.
Yes, it is, right. But right now we have 120, with the fair share money in there, we, after the road work that we're gonna be completing, we're gonna have 120,000 plus whatever we get for this year's apportionment. So if it's the same as last year, which was 194, we'll be back up around 400,000 in there. And then we're anticipating to bring next year additional paving projects to move forward.
And that, but that's only for, that's only for roads and bridge projects.
Pretty much.
We can't use it for like salaries or anything. Yeah, 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 okay. And, and on chapter 70, with the millionaires tax, and they talked about, uh, putting some of it towards schools and specifically rural schools, did we see any increase in chapter 70 money?
I'd have to look into the school budget to do that. Uh, I really didn't, other than looking at our.
So basically the school budget's up, what, six or seven percent, isn't it?
Um, so the school budget, all right, to that page. So the school budget, I know that the debt has dropped because they continue. So the debt went down 9,000 and the operating budget went up 198,000. So that's just above five, right around five percent. Yeah. Yep. Uh, may have been noted that Treetown Health had to adjust some of the fringe benefits. I know it said 22%. We had already received, the original request was like 19.8. So I just had to make, made the adjustment and it's all in your packets. So, um, you know, I think that's pretty much it unless we want to get into some specifics, but I think we have the joint meeting next and then that first meeting in April, we'll start having to make some.
I would like to give a, a full-throated endorsement of Jim Willis's proposals on Treetown. Um, the fact is that, uh, that salaries there are lagging far behind alternate, you know, alternate job opportunities that folks with these specialized skills have. And I think it's really important, we not only attract, but then retain, uh, good employees. And, and I, and I applaud, uh, applaud Jim for, um, for making sure that he can do that. And I know that, uh, it sounds like that, that's probably the, one of the larger, uh, budget jumps, but I think it's really, really important that, you know, that, uh, that we fund Treetown and, and keep salaries competitive over there.
Yeah.
Unless there's any specific questions from the board, if not, we'll have our joint meetings and really begin finalizing.
You have a recommendation on this OPEB thing?
Not on me.
Kind of a joke between him and me.
Not at this point.
Okay, for the town warrant. Uh, let's see. Town clerk and the tree warden. So what I would recommend, town clerk, the job is very different than it was in the past, uh, with elections and what has to be done. We spend a lot of money in training, so a lot of money in schooling. And I feel that this job is really important enough, like it does a town treasurer, to make an appointed instead of, uh, elected. Uh, gives the select board and town manager a little more authority over the position. And I think, you know, to hire down the road, to hire somebody who's qualified and, uh, to, someday when Terry retires, he's doing an excellent job. I think it gives the select board in the town a lot more of a better advantage. So I just wanted to bring it up tonight, let the town, whoever's listening about it, and then we'll discuss it in our next meeting and, uh, and get input on it. Like your input, you know, tonight and, but we're not gonna make the decision until next meeting when we have town input.
Well, we're not deciding to do it. It's a, it's a town warrant, so the voters would decide.
Decide, but I want, I want their input before.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Terry, I talked to Terry and she's fully in support of this, which, uh, you know, and, and like you said, with elections being so specialized now and nonpartisan, election management, it's great if it's nonpartisan, it, it makes a lot of sense to me to do the, to do, to, uh, to, to put that before the voters. I think, uh, you know, the, the big difference though is if it's an elected position, only a resident of Stockbridge, a full-time resident of Stockbridge can hold that position. And if it's an appointed position, you can hire from anywhere the most qualified candidate. Uh, but it is not a town, uh, town resident specific job. So, you know, that'll be a subject of conversation, but I got no problem with, uh, putting that on the warrant. And I won't, I won't.
No, I think that, um, our town clerk should be in a, a regular, um, position, not, uh, an elected position. It's too specialized.
Yeah.
And the tree warden, I feel like Hugh in Highway is doing most of that work just because he's in the office Monday through Friday. And so it seems it should be shifted also. And then in an elected position.
Okay, we're also discussing on making the tree ward in the, uh, appointed position and not elected. So.
How would that work if we have an election the day before town meeting? Would it be the shortest term of tree warden ever?
Well, it's nice about the, um, the clerk is, uh, is not an election.
No, not the clerk. I'm talking about the.
Yeah, but last, last time we did this, it was with the treasurer with, um, Karen. You know, it was an election year, so her name was on the ballot in case the thing got voted down.
Mm-hmm.
So it happens is the ballot will stay the same, whoever's running for tree ward will be on there. If the town votes Monday to make an appointed, then that vote is, doesn't count. But if it gets voted down and.
Oh, right, because the town is.
Yes, because the election happens.
It used to be.
Slightly dyslexic, I guess. I don't know.
So that's how it works. So it's covered either way for the town, for the tree warden. But the, uh, town clerk is not offered reelection this year, so it's a good time to do this. It's just keeps it getting complicated. So what did bring this on the next meeting to?
I'll get it warrant language, then you guys can decide if you want to place it on the warrant.
Yeah, you would like to get public input.
So can, can you just clarify that for me because I am on the ballot? So the election would be one day?
The election's Tuesday.
The town meeting is first, then the election.
And you're running for. Yeah, so it's, if the town votes to make it appointed, then election is no more. If the town votes to keep it elected, then you will be.
And who, the select board would do the appointment?
Select would do the point.
But if you do yard signs, they might become quite collectible.
Okay, uh, town warrant, chapter 90, section 17C, townwide 25 mile per hour speed limit. Like, um, so there's a section, you know, an ongoing issue has been, uh, concerns over speeds in town on side roads and on main roads and on additional roads. So just researching, uh, chapter 97, section 17C, there's a lot of communities in Massachusetts, but not really here in Berkshire County who have adopted this section. And what it does is creates a top, a townwide speed limit of 25 miles across the town. Um, unless the roads are already posted through a speed study. So, um, in the case of, uh, Stockbridge, um, Glenville Middle Road, Prospect Hill Road, Mackinac Road, West Hawthorne, Yale Hill and Lee Road all have posted speed limits and that are, uh, by speed studies. Then you have, uh, the state routes, Route 10183, Route 107, I mean, 102 and Route 7. Those have established speed limits. So those wouldn't be affected by this, but all other streets in the town would go to 25. Now, I know it's already been pointed out to me, there are other streets than these that have posted speed limits, but I'm not sure how those speed limits were established or.
Right.
Um, that, but, um, this would establish a town wide, and you can go right online and look up other towns that have done it. Now, part of it would be, if this is something that's put forward, the residents decide to do, it wouldn't go into effect right away. We have to put up signs, we have to do a campaign to notify the public, you know, the rest. So probably what we'd do is over the, over about a six-month period, do a, an outreach campaign, use the local media, use the rest, to inform people that we now, if you encounter a road in Stockbridge that doesn't have a posted speed limit, it's 25, period.
Enforcement.
Yeah, and enforceable.
Enforcement.
And that, and, and talking to, uh, public safety and that, on what it would. What I would do is we would begin ticketing January 1st of 2025. What I would do is we would begin ticketing January 1st of 2025. In the meantime, we'd be issuing warnings and getting people ready and then.
We're showing enforcement.
So, and we have to put up proper signs at the entrances of the jurisdiction and we have to get everything approved, so we would do that time to do this. But it's something that has to be approved at town meeting, can go into effect pretty much townwide because based on our, the thickly, you know, we don't really have areas, too many roads that don't have a house every 200 feet or in a business zone. So there, there might be some areas, but most of those would be found on those other routes, longer roads. So it's, I think it's a, uh, something to consider. Ultimately, once again, it's still town meeting that would decide it, but it was one of those things. Then what we can do for those roads, if we wanted to look at any of those roads, I know we've had concerns like a Yale Hill, we could then do an internal speed study where we look at, um, using rationale, examining the data on that road and then submitting to the state a request to maybe bring that in the line the entire way. If they agree with our methodology, they can grant it to us there or then they, or they can order us to do a, have an engineer examine that. So the, there's a bunch, there's a bunch of projects. This would be the first step and then the second step would be doing some of those. We do have a radar equipment with the, with the police department we purchased two years ago, wasn't that expensive? But actually we can set it and attracts data and it tells us the 85th percentile of speed. It tells us all the information we need so that we can use that to educate. So sometimes when we get complaints about speed, we actually put this piece there, leave it for a month and then see what the data actually tells us and what the actual, when people are going by, because we know they act different when there's a police car, when they see those big radar signs. This is just, just tracks information for us. So, um, it's just one step. I did include, you should have had in your packet that, and I, and I have draft language for what it would look like for a warrant article. We don't have to decide it tonight. Once again, can look for in, uh, input from the public and then maybe at the next meeting, similar to the appointed versus elected, you guys can decide to place it on the warrant at the next one.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm definitely a favor of it, but, uh.
And we can vote now, I'm gonna vote for it too, so.
Yeah, I would just vote. I would make a motion that we.
The town's gonna decide, so, you know. But we can't have the debate at town meeting, we don't have to have it beforehand.
Right.
Yeah. Make a motion, we add it to the warrant. Chapter 90, section, section 17C, as warden.
Close a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll give you something to do tomorrow and next week and, yeah. Already a language, just gonna plug it in. Okay, executive session under MGL, chapter 30A, section 21A, 3. The following purpose, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, which the tonic water work company rate increase petition to the Department of Public Utilities, DPU number 26-65. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body in that the chair or so declares, the board will not return its open session. Roll call. Hi, Patrick. Hi, Chuck.
Hi, Jamie.
Thank you.